President Proctor, go ahead.
Okay. Item four, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve to next agenda?
Seven.
Thank you, Trustee Watkins and Trustee Chin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Everybody said aye. We can move on to item five, A. Public statements related to agenda items, please limit statements to three minutes. Can we check if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment at this time?
Yes, if there's anybody in the Zoom audience that would like to make public comment, please use the raise hand function within Zoom now. And we have one person so far that would like to make public comment. Amy, I'm going to allow you to talk. You will have three minutes. And go ahead and I'll meet when you're ready.
Hi, everyone. I am. Sorry, moving windows on my computer. I'm looking forward to hearing the presentation and discussion tonight. And given that the focus is special ed, this felt like the right time to make this comment. The person who's attended and listened to many board meetings over the years, there's been a pattern of certain people, both board members and mentors, of regularly pulling out and commenting on a common consent agenda item, the amount of budget spent on NPS and NPA providers. So if you're going to take away anything from my comment today, I hope it is this. Number one, by routinely commenting on the need to reduce the amount of money spent on NPS and NPA, it feels that you're marginalizing the needs of a portion of our special needs community with the most complex needs. And number two, budget spent on NPS and NPA will always be a non-zero number. So if we're going to focus the narrative on budget spent, please think to be more constructive and find ways to identify areas to improve our programming and hiring practices. To dig into my first point, the spectrum of services required to support our special needs community. And in some cases, those needs cannot be met of what any district is able to provide. It often feels that the belief is we should be able to just flip the switch and our district would easily be able to provide these services within our walls. If we believe that, frankly, diminishing the complexity of student needs. Subjectively, I know many families who have NPS placements and NPA providers, one of my children having multiple people on his team from non-public agencies. In many cases, these placements and providers have transformed their child's experience and access to education. Objectively, our district is not unique in placing students in NPSs using NPAs or allocating funding to do so. More importantly, the process of a child to receive an NPS placement isn't easy. It's often a result of years of failure to service the needs of a child, along with frustration, tears, and frankly anger on the part of both students and parents. So if we decide to continue the practice of routinely pulling out these consent agenda items, discussing and debating the necessity of spending budget on NPS and NPA, please remember that behind each of those numbers is a child family, attempting to do their best to gain access to education, which they rightfully deserve. To be clear, the district can and should do better. So if we're bought into the idea that the budget will be a non-zero number, when we do discuss it and what districts should do to improve, we should look to be more constructive and identify ways to measure the relative effectiveness of our programs, hiring, and teacher and staff retention. With relative ease, I believe we should be able to do this by benchmarking our peers. Thanks to Heather, we have data showing the number of students serviced by this funding. If we take that ratio and compare it to other districts, how do we compare? And if in that comparison, we've determined we spend more relative budget, we should reach out and understand what services or programs those districts are providing and assess whether it could be a success in our district. So in closing, I ask that if people have a particular passion for this topic, though whatever the end goal may be, that you remember that behind the numbers are children. And if you do continue bringing up the topic to be more constructive and find ways to drive the narrative forward. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other members of the public that would like to speak using Zoom, please use the raise hand functionality within Zoom now. President Proctor, go ahead. There are no more members who would like to make comment.
Thank you so much. We will go on to six, A. Special education study session.
Thank you. So good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Ochoa. We're very pleased to present to you tonight the Special Education Study Section. With me is Director of Special Education Heather Morgan and Assistant Director Kira Nazario. The discussion points for this evening will be around, some of them will be about behavior team, sensory rooms, our district program locations, a roadmap for special ed, staffing updates, some comparison of data from CAS scores, as well as some DNQs and initials. Go ahead, Heather.
All right, thank you. Again, I'm Heather Morgan. I'm the Director of Special Education. I would like to explain what you have in front of you, just so that you can see. We've prepared, not only this, these are just the slides that we're going to be going through, but underneath that, in order, are the supporting documents for each of our conversations today. So I just want to make sure you have that. The only one that's not in order is the big roadmap, it's in the back because it's big. So just make sure you had all of that. So the first talking point for today is the development of our behavior team. And you do have some supporting documentation on that. It's the pyramid sheet. So what we really wanted to highlight today was that in the, what we were able to provide last year, what we've changed for this year, and then what next year looks like in terms of the development of the behavior team. So in 2022, we did designate one coordinator as a behavior team lead, and that person oversaw all of the behavioral technicians, we call them BTs. And that was pretty much it. It was a very singular kind of parallel structure. And we very early on recognized the need for a more robust structure. So as you know, this year, we have a coordinator at the top who oversees our three newly hired BCBA's or board certified behavior analysts. And they oversee the registered behavior techs and all of the BTs that work under them as paras. We also added the paratree classification and created some training modules to be completed prior to applying for that paratree position.
Recording in progress.
The, for next year, so for 2324, looking forward, we continue, we're planning to continue this expansion. There's increased need for behavior support in both general education and special education settings. And through the lens of MTSS, we are deploying our BCBA's and our BTs, not only for students with special education, but also for students in the general education program in an attempt to interrupt behaviors that may eventually land them in sort of a pathway for special education, which is in many cases inappropriate. So this is an important structure. I want to continue building that for next year. Okay. So, and then I can move on to Dennis, if you want to talk a little bit about our sensory room.
Sure. So this year, we've actually, the district has supported a sensory room, starting at Lead Elementary, with the support from the occupational therapists to give input on that sensory room program. This Lead Sensory Room is just about ready to open. I know Superintendent Ochoa and Director Morgan and a few others were there this week to look at it. But the idea of the sensory room is that eventually every school with a STC program with preschool and K22 classrooms will have a sensory room. Students will have the opportunity to use these rooms as a place to go and take a sensory break, engage in a different way, get their senses going, to really have a break. I don't know if you want to come in and?
Yeah, so many of the students, especially in the primary grades and the preschool program, have what we refer to as sensory diets. And it's part of their diagnosis and their program and their needs within their IP. And so this provides a location and also all of the different structures and materials that they use as part of that, they call it a sensory diet. So you may have something kind of like built into your day where like you work for an hour or two and then you go take a break and it's a designated space, a designated time. And we want to really carefully manage that because we don't want it to become a place just to, like, where somebody's having an issue to sort of leave them or put them there. That's not the point of the room at all. It's very much designated specifically for occupational therapy and occupational therapists, like oversight, and where students will go in a very purposeful way to get their sensory needs met. Yeah.
So the next section is about program shapes and implications. There is a handout in the packet for the next two years. So as you know, from last year to this year, we made some changes in locations and program placements. So in the 21 and 22 square, our district programming across the district was very less limited, having some complexes, having significantly more programs than others, which meant for those in the complexes that didn't have as much, it was long bus rides removing them from their schools and, you know, where their siblings attend. So this year, we moved some programs to make that a little bit more distributed evenly, which has allowed students to attend schools closer to home. But we're already looking at next year and kind of just continuing this redistribution and looking at the potential of opening a therapeutic class to accommodate children who are currently served by some of our NPSs in the area that you have need, that you don't have current programming, or to bring them kind of back home, closer to home and in the district where we can serve them.
Yeah, I'd like to just expand on that a little bit, too. We have some sort of proposed, I guess they're not completely fleshed out yet, but you can see sort of some of our, you know, thoughts about where things may go and where we may expand programs, especially in places where this year we added, for example, like K2 programs, we're thinking to add three, five programs so those students can stay at the schools that they're currently attending. We're also looking at adding, hopefully, a therapeutic classroom next year internally, which would be for students maybe diagnosed with emotional disturbance or other, other, like, more impacted students that we currently are unable to serve with our current programs. And those are students who do end up going to non-public schools and other sorts of programs that are outside of the district. If we create this program, it's done with the, the goal of bringing students back so that we are able to serve them ourselves. And that would require the staffing of a therapeutic program, which usually includes like a full-time psychologist, a counselor, an ad specialist in the room. And so we're looking at different locations right now and examining what that would look like and where we. Okay, so I'm going to share with you the year-long roadmap. That is the longer colorful document here. And this roadmap was designed to highlight the, like, four big areas for special education for the school year and also to explain the connections back to the strategic plan. And all the decisions that we make and everything that we do should essentially come back to this and be driven by the strategic plan so that we're all in alignment with all the decisions that were prioritized when that was developed. So the first one is our data-driven programs and practices. Our goal there is to increase student academic achievement for students with disabilities. We do have some data on that to share as well. In doing this, we're ensuring that all students have access to grade-level curriculum and standards, and we're providing supplemental evidence-based curriculum and cross-department PD opportunities for all staff. The connection to the strategic plan for data-driven programs and practices is goal one, which is creating learning opportunities for all pre-K through eighth grade students, resulting in closing the achievement gap, culminating in personal and academic success in high school and beyond. The second category is equity-driven practices. And our goal here is to disrupt inequitable outcomes for students with disabilities. This is based on our SIGTHIS work or significant disproportionality work, which is where we are over-identifying. Right now, the category, as we've discussed in the past, is our primary students who are male and Latinx. And their identification is to specific learning disability. Also, we have developed the inclusion task force, which is now underway. We've had two meetings so far this year. We also have our dual identified learners committee, which is a joint effort between special education led by Kira and also, also worked with Dr. Alida Barra Cruz and Dale Rogers. And we also have the district behavior team, which I just described, the kind of pyramidal structures of, which should increase access to instruction through behavior support and training. And the connection to strategic plan here is goal two, which is to reduce inequitable outcomes for all students and staff by prioritizing equity, access, and inclusion. The third area is family and community partnerships. And our goal here is to foster community partnerships to provide a sense of belonging with inclusiveness for those with disabilities. And so some of the ways that we do that are through CDAC, which is our, it's not quite monthly, we do a little, little more spread out than that, but it's our parent special education district advisory committee. And then we, like, we have our meeting next week, actually. We'd like everyone to know about that, please tend. We have a special speaker coming and she will be discussing inclusion. Also partnership with the San Mateo Foster City Ed Foundation, which is really exciting because they are supporting a field trip that we're taking for all students with disabilities. We're going to, the first wave of that field trip will happen in December. And we're going to a place in Sunnydale called AAH, which is Animal-Assisted Happiness. And also some new initiatives that we're moving forward with, like Best Buddies, Special Olympics. Both of those, those are actually sister nonprofits and we're working to partner with them to develop opportunities for inclusion, both during the school day, which like Best Buddies is kind of like a lunchtime club for both general education and special education students to get together. And Special Olympics, as many of you may be familiar with that organization, and that's after-school sports culminating in a big Olympic competition. That's very new and we're just learning about that.
Just really quick, people online are saying it's hard to hear you.
Is everybody to turn up the sound?
Here. There we go. Hopefully that's better. I'll try to yell. Thank you. Okay. And then the connection to the strategic plan for family and community partnerships is goal three, which is to provide a safe, caring, nurturing, and culturally responsive environment for all students to meet the needs of the whole child. And then finally, the last section of our roadmap is systems and accountability. So our goal here is to monitor and support IEP compliance requirements per the California Ed Code. And so in doing this, we are doing IEP compliance monitoring. What that looks like is we will just sort of randomly pick IPs here and there. And Kira and I will go through and kind of audit them for completeness for any places where there may, they may not be legally defensible or there's some, some sort of mistakes. And those are things that we can use to build the capacity of our teams and make sure that they're learning to do the most compliant programs and IPs for our students. Also, IEP service tracking, which is, at the end of this year, it will be a mandate from the state. So we're starting that already to make sure that all, all services are tracked. Every, we turn them in monthly, but best practice is to do it weekly so it doesn't back backlog. And then also department reorg to streamline support. And that includes what we started this year with having, adding the position of assistant director and having a coordinator in charge of each of the four complexes. And then also internal file audits, which again is very similar to compliance monitoring. But that's a more complete look at a student's whole file and seeing, you know, looking within it to make sure that everything in it is compliant and correct. And that also connects to goal two, just like equity-driven practices, which is to reduce inequitable outcomes for all students and staff by prioritizing equity, access, and inclusion. So this document, as I mentioned before, it is designed to be our roadmap and our guide in all the decisions that we make and everything that we do within the special education department. And I wanted to make sure that everyone here was familiar with it and understood our, our goals and our priorities. And it's also available on the website and is being shared with all of the respective groups within our department. So I think at this point, if you, any of you have questions for me or for the team?
I have just a couple of questions. I'm wondering if we could just maybe dive a little deeper into some of them?
Yes, please.
I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about what the inclusion task force is and how that works? And then also, we've talked a few times or many times, I guess, about the significant disproportionality work. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about, like, what, what are we doing and how do we, you know, get back into like a more proportional?
Yes, like, how are we doing this? Yes. So for the inclusion task force is, we put it together this year. It's grown to a really nice size. We have about 18 members, representative of parents, gen ed teachers, special education teachers, administrators, all different ages. So we have preschool representatives. I'm trying to think, we have social workers involved. I'm trying to think who else is on it. So a broad representation of pretty much every single kind of category you can think of. And our goal is to come up with a recommendation for what inclusion could look like on a district-wide level. The reason that we started this was the work going into inclusion in our district had, had good heart behind it in the years past, but it was, it was kind of sporadic and not consistent across the schools. So we're, what we wanted to do was take a step back, really take a deep dive into best practices, what's been successful in other districts, what's fiscally manageable, also what the implications would be for HR, like what are the staffing implications? Are we going to need more people to do this? Or is, how are we going to use the people that we currently have? Oh, those are other two categories that are included in the committee. I also have the business department and HR involved in, in the meetings, our monthly meetings. And so at this point, we're, we've done a little bit of work because we're, we just had our second meeting. And we're diving into sort of the, the recommendations of the CDE and what their best practices are, especially in, starting with early childhood programs for inclusion. And moving forward, we will start going into some other districts that have successfully implemented this and examining, you know, what the implications will be for us. And then hopefully by April, we should have a recommendation for you all as to what we think this could look like for the 2324 school year. Does that help? Okay, great. And then in terms of SIGTHIS, so significant disproportionality, even though it, it falls on the shoulders of special education because what's happening is too large of numbers of children have been identified for requiring special education services. However, that actually is, the, the problem stems from pre-referral. So this is more of a gen ed issue. So what we've done as a district to start to disrupt this is the development of all the interventions that we have in place. So for example, PATH for our primary readers. The behavior team is there to support kids when they're having any, some kind of behavior problems that are impeding their ability to access their education. We have Spire is being used as an intervention. It's also a support tool once you've been identified, but it can be used also for reading intervention at the older students. And all of the, and also MTSS and, you know, all the things that we put in place in hiring Dr. Haven and Dr. Heredia in the student services side of the house, which they're not special education, but they're supporting on the gen ed side to prevent students from being, jumping to referrals too soon in the process, in the process. And we also, oh, yeah.
I can chime in. Hi, everybody. How are you? I miss you guys. You guys, it looks like a lot of fun in there. Yeah, it's a big party, but you know, the other thing that we're trying to do is, what we're saying is, we want our school teams, our principals, our counselors, our teachers, we want them to meet with parents early on when a child's in kindergarten, when a child's in first grade. So we can start giving interventions to a child when they're five and six years old. So this year, for the first time, our student services department, Dr. Haven, with Dennis's support, pre-populated lists of kids for the entire district, every school, and gave those lists to our principals indicating, these are kids we need to get involved in what's called a student study team or an SST. We think that's going to have a really dramatic impact on kids getting help early in their general education setting so that, because what you want to try to rule out is you have two kids, Ken and myself. We're both in the same first grade class. Both of us are struggling. If we both get six or seven interventions and I start to make progress, my mom and dad don't want me to get tested for special ed. I'm making progress. I'm, I'm getting closer to grade level. If Ken's getting those same interventions and it's not helping him, then we need to think about what else we might be missing. And a special education referral might be warranted. But it's just one of these, sort of a process thing and it takes time, but the work is already underway.
Thank you. So right, that is, that's the plan, is that we've got interventions in place that we never had before. It's far more robust and we're insisting on it. We're also insisting on cycles of inquiry prior to referrals. So when people, the old knee-jerk thing would be to come to a special ed and say, this kid needs evaluation. And we're saying, no, wait, like, go through these processes, you know, using interventions that we're providing, have the meetings with the parents, have the meetings with the teacher, employ the behavior team, employ footsteps to brilliance, employ all, all these other things that we have in place to give the kids a chance to excel before suggesting that there might be something more serious going on that requires special education. So in doing so, we're looking for, so like, I will be doing month-to-month comparisons, but looking for fewer referrals, you know, fewer overall qualifications or initials. And that's something that we'll be monitoring over the course of the year. Still very early in the year. Kids haven't had their, you know, only a couple of months in now. So usually we don't get referrals this early. If we do, then it may be a carryover from last year. But we, as, as we move into the school year, we'll start monitoring that and keeping an eye on it. We should be seeing a decrease in it because we're asking people to do the pre-referral interventions.
I have a couple of questions. But are we going to be talking about classrooms in more depth? I mean, I know you all talked about sensory. Emotionally, classroom students with emotional disturbance.
Right. Thinking about adding that.
Yeah. Are you guys, I'm just, I'll ask a question about if you're not planning to go in more depth, but if you are, oh, wait.
Go ahead. No, go ahead and ask and I can fill it in as needed.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to get a little bit more information about, like, the process and strategy for like, how did we decide that we wanted to open these classes? How did we decide where? What kinds of supports are in place at these school sites for supporting the transitions? Because they're like, how are we supporting staff, like all staff? All those kinds of things. So I just like, I'm curious to know a little bit more about that.
So there are, the, the, the starting point is the need for the class, right? So we have many students that if we don't currently have a program that is able to serve them for whatever their needs are, we have to outsource. And that's where we end up sending kids to non-public schools. And so in, in looking at the numbers of kids that we're sending and, and trends in maybe, you know, different groupings of kids that attend other schools, we determine that we probably have enough students that with the properly designed class, we could bring them back, which is, would be awesome. And so in terms of location, I am going to be during the Thanksgiving break actually visiting some of the campuses to look for places that not only have space, but have space and sort of ideal spots at the school. We're looking for accessibility. We're looking for inclusion. We want, you know, kids to feel like they're part of a, you know, a comprehensive school and that they're not, you know, stuck off in the, you know, portable in the back somewhere and want to be part of the school. you know, a comprehensive school and that they're not, you know, stuck off in the, you know, portable in the back somewhere and want to be part of the school. But really the first thing, the first step is staffing. So I've already started advertising and looking for the specific stuff you need in a class like that. Therapeutic classroom really depends on the correct placement and the correct choice of the people who are there. So as I mentioned before, we need to have a designated psychologist. We need to have a designated counselor. We need to have a designated education, educational specialist or otherwise known as a teacher. We really can't open a successful classroom without those people there. And of course, there'll be pairs and things as well, depending on which students they are and what their needs are. And then in addition to just the location, there's the physical design of the classroom. So we want to design it to be therapeutic. We want to design it to have the things that students need to calm down. If they're emotionally disturbed, they're going to need certain, you know, equipment and furniture and placement and design, all of that goes into the structure of the class as well. And we look to, there are some models, we have, there's a county model that's brand new and just started this year and we have a few students there. And we'll probably be collaborating with them on their design also, so that we can have something similar because it's being, it's a very successful model.
Yeah, please.
And so just generally talking about not the therapeutic class, but just kind of where we're putting things, we consider a continuity. So if your child was in a special day class in preschool, you would go to one site and the way it was designed before, you might have to transfer to a different site for a K two SDC. And then if that child stays in a special day class and they don't have a three-five, then that's another school. So I, I think the typical experience of a student is going to one school, being part of that community, being with their siblings throughout. So when we're looking at program locations for next year, we were trying to be strategic about kind of building that continuity for those kids so that we're not moving them several times. And then they can really be part of that school community. And I wanted to add too, we do have some programs that are more specific. So we have our special day classes that are for our moderate to severe population. There are fewer of them, but if you look historically, we, at the middle school level, for example, well, we have two programs and they're both at the same school. So if you live anywhere in the district, you still have, and you needed that program, you can still have to go to that one school. So we're trying to break it up so that you can go and attend closer to home and closer to where your peers are, instead of just one location for both programs.
Yeah. And also just to, the, the heavy pressure of having a lot of special ed programs in one school, that's, that's a lot on the administration. It's more IEPs. It's, there's, there's a lot of implications for the school itself, when you have a heavy number of programs in one place. So we're trying to be a little bit more distributed and evenly balanced so that we don't have one school that has all this pressure. One principal that spends every single day in IEPs because there's so many that they need to schedule in order to be in compliance. So this also kind of spreads that, you know, shares the wealth, spreads it out, enlightens the heavy pressure on, on classes or schools that have many, many programs in them.
Yeah, no, I think that's really helpful. And I, I mean, I totally, I know that we talked about the distribution and having the continuity and that's like, great. I think that's absolutely the direction we should go. I think my question is really more around like, as we open up new programs at new sites, like, how, what are the structures and systems we have in place to ensure that administrators, staff, community, like that it really is inclusive, right? Because, I mean, we recently just thought out about a situation where like, parents were being not inclusive to a student with special needs at a school that typically doesn't serve students with special needs, right? Like, that's counterproductive to what we're trying to do, right? And so what are we doing to ensure that folks are like, that it's going to be in an actually inclusive environment as we're opening new types of classrooms and classrooms at sites that are not used to having students with special needs, like at their site, right? Which is, yeah, so that's more my question is around like, what are we doing to ensure that those supports are in place?
Well, when you mention that, I think firstly, the, the most important person in the room is the teacher, other than the students, right? So I think about recruitment and finding a therapist, for example, the therapeutic classroom teacher is paramount and getting out early to do that, which will require us to probably do some traveling, perhaps out of the Bay area. But I think in that regard, knowing, for example, if we're going to have a therapeutic classroom at, let's say, you know, Bayside. Getting with administration early, talking to the community, informing them and educating them about what is this program? What does it look like? What might the impact be on their site with the teachers? What can we do to support them with PD? Is there some kind of community event to make sure that the families are included? Because it is a big deal. I taught that classroom years ago. And to me, it's really about making sure that everybody understands what that program is about. What, how can we make sure those students in that program are included fully as possible? Particularly in a therapeutic classroom, because oftentimes those kids really, if they're not there for the academics, it's more behavioral. So that can be very disruptive to some environments. So recognizing that and knowing what can we do, get in front of it, educate the community, make sure the teachers are on board. As Heather said, having a school site, a counselor, other support staff there as a team, getting that team early and then sharing it with the community and there's no surprises. So that's a great question.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, I'm not going to believe her the point, but like, the questions are like, what are we going to do to do that? I guess I'm looking for like, what are we going to do? So I think like something to come back to, but I just hope that that's like front and up of mind for us as we're thinking about this.
I did have one more question, but I'll see.
Go ahead. My other, well, are we doing questions and then comments and then?
It's like a midway point, so it's a good time to like, comment, question, we don't even go back to public comments for a little bit.
Okay.
It's, I, I think it's more of like a, it's a comment slash question. I mean, I appreciate like seeing the layout of this. I know that I've asked for like something similar to this, so I appreciate that. And I'd like, love the connection to the strategic plan and kind of knowing what you all are focused on. I think it's really helpful and I think it's helpful to, you know, in terms of like communicating to parents and, and staff and all of that. And so I'm happy to hear that, like, that's in the works. I guess my question on it or is just thinking about like, we think about these goals, like, what were we, like, for example, if I take this first one on increasing student academic ability for students with disabilities, like, have we really like dug into root cause of why it's so low? What are like our quantitative goals for like, okay, here it is now. This is where we're hoping to go in a year. These are all the things, like you talk about, some of the things that we're going to do to get there. How are we like measuring the impact of them, right? Like I asked these same questions about everything, right? But that's like the kind of direction that I'm just wondering about how we're like really thinking about measuring our success with these things and communicating that to all of our stakeholders. And then my other, I guess, question slash comment is just, like, there's a lot of different groups that are involved in terms of, like, there's the inclusion task force and there's CDAC and there's the, you know, there's like all of these, there's like the SLT, right? There's like all of these different groups. I guess my question is, is like, one, how are they all involved and invested in this? And how are we like bringing them along on this journey? And two, how do they all talk to one another so that it doesn't become like these silos, right? Because like, inclusion, despite it being one stream of work, is very interrelated with like a bunch of other areas. And so how do we, it's like significant disproportionality and, you know, anyway, so that was, that's just like another like question slash comment. So not necessarily expecting you to answer these things now, but just more things that I'm thinking about as I look at this.
Thank you.
Why don't we just? Maybe we can check in for public comment, just kind of a midway point and see if there's anything.
If there are any members in the audience that would like to make public comment using Zoom, please use the raise hand functionality within Zoom now. We have a couple of members in the audience that would like to make public comment. Jennifer, we're going to start with you. I'm.
Hi there. Can you all hear me? Yes. Thanks very much. I apologize if there's noise in the background. I just wanted to make a comment just about the potential plans for opening a therapeutic classroom. My daughter is at an NPS. She's at Esther B. Clark. And I appreciate Trustee Watkins's questions about sort of how to make sure that students who are attending a therapeutic classroom on a public school campus are fully included. I can tell you that one reason that Esther B. Clark is effective is that all of the behavioral supports that are in place and the therapeutic supports that are in place are in place schoolwide. So they are a part of every minute of every student's day. And so I think it's something really important to consider as we think about an ED classroom on a public school site, just as these children are going to mainstream classroom, how are those behavioral and therapeutic supports carried through? So they're there for every minute of every day. So I realize I'm sort of repeating Trustee Watkins's question, but just sort of on a very kind of practical level, I think that's something really important to consider. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. If there are any other members of the public comment I would like to make a public comment, please use the raise your hand functionality. Now we are going to move on to our next commenter. One moment. And Amy, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to add on to what Trustee Watkins and what Jennifer just said about the ED classroom. And I, I guess I would just hope for some more clarification around the grade level span and what that would look like. I know the documentation indicated it could be at Bayside. But it was also in like that middle school row on the page. So I would be curious if in thinking about this, you're considering a six through eight classroom, or if you're considering a K through eight classroom. I know that there are many students in elementary grades as well who may need this kind of support. So just curious to get clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. President Proctor, back to you. There are no more comments on Zoom.
If there's anything you want to do after.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add that the documentation that we put for twenty-three, twenty-four, this is all like draft. So these are not, that they fully confirmed or it's more like thoughts and just looking at making a visual actually to kind of really seem a more even placement and sort of what we're thinking about. Part of the concern that were, were mentioned by both Amy and Jennifer is why we're starting this so early. So this is very, very early because we're just, you know, very, maybe you don't remember what we're talking about for next fall. That's the amount of time we're going to need to make sure all these things are in place. And then this is why we very intentionally started very early. Okay, so I just want to make sure that I also wanted to reassure everyone it's a draft, so I don't want anybody alarmed thinking like, I didn't know. These are just our, our preliminary thoughts about where things may, may go. And then we can move on, let's see, to staffing updates. Do you want to take that, Cara?
I didn't ask the question, but I just wanted to say, I recognize like, and I hope that I, I feel like our board knows this and we all know this and so do the parents of kids that have special needs. But maybe like, we need to be more proactive as a community about messaging, like the importance of inclusion and and giving kids, like that's the ability, because especially kids that have special needs need, many of them, not all, right? Every child is different, but need stability and routine, and that's actually really important for them. So I just wanted to add that. And if we can help do that in any way, I, I'm, I just think about like, right, like the, the, the situation that we have at one of our schools right now where I just, I, I empathize with that family, the, the teacher, the even you all district leadership, like, how do you, how do you confront that in a way that is compassionate, but also like very matter of fact, right? It's not a question, I'm just.
Okay, so Cara is going to present some staffing updates where we are currently right now.
Okay, so we are working very closely with our human resources department and the partner agencies we work with to just on a continuous basis to get some of these things covered up. Currently, we have two point five FTE, so two and a half positions of resource specialists that are open below. We have two and a half positions for resource specialists that are open at this current time. And we do have temporary staff in place to cover at these different locations. We reassigned our program specialists and a couple of different teachers for a temporary basis. So these students are receiving their services, but we are continually looking for resource specialists to serve in those roles. So currently we don't have any openings for psychologists or special day class teachers. And we are in search of speech therapists as well. We are talking to agencies and trying to work out different solutions. Like contractors to do maybe assessments as needed while we're waiting for a full-time speech therapist to become available.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll add on to that, that locating speech therapists right now is bigger than just us. It's a huge problem in all districts. They're very, very difficult to find. They do, they, there are some that provide virtual services, but we have not found that to be a successful model. We tried it a little bit last year. It was not something that we were, would like to move forward with. And the in-person therapists are just few and far between. So I just want to make that. And actually, that's something that we're even hearing from families who receive private therapy that even the waitlist for the private therapists are really, really long right now. So that, that is an actual problem and something that we're, you know, we're being as creative as possible and looking into different options for that. But we do have openings for speech therapists right now.
Well, yes. And as I said, I think it's really important that we go, we're out early now, knowing what our planning is for next year, that we get in front of it. Typically, it's February, March when we start to really do interviews. We want to start December, January, February. And as I said, I think going out of the Bay area because this market is so tight, so across the state, maybe traveling across the country to recruit specialized teachers because it's that competitive.
Also, speech therapists, many of them are qualified to work in other environments also. So they don't only work in schools, they may work in hospitals or clinical settings. And so that's just, we're also competing with those markets, just to be aware. Okay, do you want to go to?
Okay, so for this section, we just wanted to highlight some of our statewide assessment data that's available. So what you're seeing here and on the next slide is a comparison of two thousand nineteen results and the twenty-twenty-two results. Because of the pandemic, we did have a stoppage of testing. So we're kind of comparing pre-pandemic to just the, this last round in the spring. So for English Language Arts, this is the results for all students in the district that take the statewide testing, so third through eighth graders. And the percentage of not met and then met exceeded. So this is encouraging because in two thousand nineteen, sixty-seven percent were not of students with disabilities, were not meeting. But in twenty-twenty-two, we saw that number go down to sixty-two percent. So we do have a lot of work to do, but we did see an improvement there. And then on the other side, this is English Language Arts specifically. We had met and exceeded about thirteen percent in two thousand nineteen, and now we increased that up to eighteen percent. So, so a lot of work to do in this area, but it is encouraging that that progress is there. still a lot of work to do in this area, but it is encouraging that that progress is there going in the right direction. And that was for English Language Arts, so I'm gonna and this would be for mathematics, and we saw a similar trend. So in math, in two thousand nineteen, seventy percent of our students with disabilities were not meeting the expectations, and we saw that go down in two thousand twenty-two to sixty-six percent. So again, it's good, we're moving in the right direction, but a lot of work to do still. And then we saw something similar in the met exceeded range for fourteen percent in two thousand nineteen to seventeen and a half percent in two thousand twenty-two. We just wanted to kind of highlight those specific areas.
Can I have a question on this? Just please. And if I'm being like totally dumb, just let me know. But when we look at, you know, this kind of data for general ed students, or I guess when we look at it for the whole district, it's, it's broken up like by ethnicity, by like socioeconomic status, do we not do that for special education? Like, do we not break this down small into different groups? Because I could imagine maybe a family with means, like, maybe their students are bringing up the average while other, other families maybe.
So we can, we can disaggregate it further. One of the main categories that gets reported on is just students with disabilities. So it's very broad. Because that does contain students and many more subgroups. I think we can, one of the easiest ones to look at compared to maybe our overall group would be our dual identified students. So we can, and that's something we can do for you. I don't have that with me in front of me right now, but that's something we can do a side by side of dual identifying compared to the overall students with disabilities category.
I think, I mean, I'm just like using my, like, what I think we would see, and I'm thinking we're probably, we'll probably see some similar, like, gaps between different students. And so I was just curious if we ever zoom in that way.
And keep in mind, students with disabilities is a very broad category, because it's every type of IP you can think of included in that category. So it ranges from everything from RSP to mod severe to emotionally disturbed to speech and language only. So yeah, it's, it's not like it's just one type of student.
And I do think to that point, and I know sometimes it's difficult because you don't have enough students to like, you have to be careful.
Statistically relevant.
Privacy, like, you know, when the numbers are just small, those sorts of things. But I do think to the extent that when we look at data, we can disaggregate. I think that's a really important one. And, and I also think by designation, like to the extent possible, right, like we can look at RSP versus SDC versus speech and language only, like, you know, because this is really encouraging. And like, if we see that this isn't happening in SDC, like, we need to really pay attention to that. If we see this isn't happening, or if I do, or you know, students are dual identified, like, we need to really be paying attention to that. And so I think it's important, like, the next time that we do that to the interesting because I mean, I think, yes, like, we should be encouraged, and this is like, it's great to see progress, and like, you see the data all over around, like, kids, particularly students with disabilities, and, you know, all of the other groups of kids that we often look at that, you know, are really, really are not performing well after the pandemic. And this, to be clear, this is not performing well at all. But we are seeing an improvement, and that is, you know, something for sure that should be celebrated. And it also, like, always a deeper look. I had a question about
Just, just to continue the thought, it's just going back to what you said earlier in the presentation about the over identification of Latinx males. So the thought is, that would be an interesting thing to pull out.
Do you know the exact number of the, of our students that are Latinx males that?
Is that in one of the documents at the end? It was in my presentation from August. So we do have it. I don't have it in front of me right now, but the total, yeah, the percentages are, I'm a little, I don't want to speak inaccurately, but our total number of students, it's around a thousand, right?
It's about thirteen hundred with AIPs total of everybody.
And I think that the number of Hispanic males, it was like, it was high.
I think it was, it was the Latinx population with SLD, so it includes boys and girls. I think it was around two hundred kids.
Yeah, so I have that. And actually, if you look back to the board presentation from August, it delineates out a little bit more carefully with the exact numbers.
So I know we have like the plan, like, we have a plan to lower that number, but I'm just wondering if there's like an easy way. Maybe you won't go forward, really look at it every time, like, like, is the number decreasing? Is it the same?
Right, yeah. And part of the issue right now is it's still a little early in the year. This is about the time when we start to get referrals, right? And we're starting the interventions and, you know, kids first start, especially the little ones, a lot of them are, you know, they're brand new to school, never been to school before, this is all fresh. They got to learn how to be a student, they got to learn how to do all of the little things that we kind of take for granted in classroom environments. So once they've worked through all of that, and then people are starting to say, I still have concerns. So it's a little hard to compare month to month yet. But as we move forward, we will keep an eye on that and pay attention to the number of referrals, the number of assessments, number of kids who are getting identified.
The way that I look at it is like, one hundred percent, that's a big part of it, right? Like, let's like, make sure that kids aren't being over-referred, but then also for the students that are already identified that maybe shouldn't be. What's the plan for that? I know we've talked about it before.
Right, right. Yeah, and, and you know, the, the good thing about special education is the goal is to no longer qualify. Right? And that's why we have the annual reviews and triennial assessments. So, you know, every three years they get reassessed. And we, parents or anyone can really call an IP at any time. A lot of times you hear the term like emergency IP, there's really no such thing, because an IP can be called at any time. So we don't need to have emergencies. But during those meetings and in those reviews, we're looking for progress on goals. And those goals are what the IP is constructed of. And so as we're, as we're meeting and talking about the kids and then what their goals are, and the services we provide to them should be tailored to those goals that they're achieving those goals. So yes, we can reclassify kids, we can exit them from having an IP. And that's a particular group we want to monitor and keep an eye on, because we want to make sure we're not giving unnecessary services to kids, and we want to make sure we're giving them services in the areas that they need, so that they eventually no longer require it.
Yeah, I guess I wonder because three years, right, to be classified as needing special education and then to wait three years. I just think about like a lot of families I know wouldn't necessarily know that they can ask for an IP anytime and why that would be beneficial unless it's like explicitly explained to them in that way. I just wonder, I'm just throwing it out there, like and I wanted to know like what the impact would be on staff, but like, would it make sense to just say, well, for this group of kids, because they're over-identified, we actually want to do the IP every year so that we can have more urgency around, around, I don't know, it's, it's interesting though, because it's like, if they really need and they are in special education because because they need it, and we don't want to like push them out.
Take services away that they need. No, and we wouldn't do that.
But if they know, if they, if they were I don't know, it's just, it's just like weird. It's, it's complicated, right? Because if you were assessed, then you I don't know, I know we've talked about this in depth, and I've had a super long day, so that's why I've been kind of quiet, like, head hurts and everything. I think my, my point is could we develop a plan to have more urgency around IP meetings and parent engagement with Latinx male students, since we know they're over-identified.
So I, that's a great question, and it actually reminded me that we've received some sort of preliminary reviews this date, because we're in significant disproportionality. They meet with us, and we've developed, like Dr. Haven is overseeing our CCS plan, and part of that is the SIGDIS. And so we have assigned people who work with us on reviewing our schools to watch. They've identified a couple of schools that they really want us to kind of focus on in particular, because they think that maybe the attention on those would disrupt what's happening. And one of the big areas they want us to focus on is middle schools. So we're doing that. Also, there are, I hear what you're saying there, but there are some limitations in terms of what we can do, because there's so much federal law around IEPs. So there are some things that like, it would be wonderful if we could, could, you know, pull people out.
Need to be pulled into, I get that, and that's what I was referring to, like.
The, yeah, assessments take a really long time, and it is, you know, it's an enormous amount of work. Typically, there's a psychological, educational evaluation. There's also an academic assessment, and then in some cases, there are more, they're like occupational therapy assessment or physical therapy, or, you know, kids that have other unique needs, there are other kinds of evaluations that might go into it. So it can be like a huge battery of testing, which, and that too is hard on kids. And so, and then there's rules about how often you do it, which tests you can use within a certain amount of time after having been tested. So if you, if we use one exam to evaluate you, we can't use it again for a while. Be a different one.
I have my hand raised. I've been raising my hand for minutes now. Hi, everyone. I'm, I'm going to share my screen, and I'm going to show you all something. Okay, this is data, this is, this is fresh data. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen, give me a second here. Make sure I have this capability. There we go. All right, you guys have seen these, these images from me before. Will you give me a thumbs up if you can see it? Can I get a thumbs up from somebody?
Not yet.
No.
You can see it. All right. This is Samhail Foster City School District test scores four years ago. I've toggled it, so it's showing you sixth grade. I've toggled it, so it's showing you students with disabilities. In math, six point eight percent of kids four years ago, students with special needs, were meeting or exceeding standards. And eighty-two percent were not. Now, let's look at the state. This is eighteen, nineteen, four years ago, state of California, same grade level, same groups. Nine and a half percent and seventy-four point four percent. Okay. Neither is particularly good. There's like a lot of work to do, right? But what did you all do as a board to switch how we educate kids in sixth grade? You came up with a heterogeneous math experience that affected thousands of kids and reverberating even more this year and, and continuing next year. Students with special needs were in those math classes. They were a party to this new way of teaching. So now this is the state of California. This year, I've toggled it to this year. The data looks the same as it did four years ago. So now I'm going to show you what our data looks like after the very powerful and systemic change this board and our educators, your wonderful special educators and math teachers implemented to have dramatic change. This chart is not like, oh, it went up a little bit. This is like wow, like eighty-two and a half percent four years ago to sixty-five point nine percent. That's, I'm telling you, it's very hard to move a district our size. But what this board did with, by partnering with the educators and listening to those, and then facilitating our our work with the additional math coaching and the additional PD and a high-quality curriculum is you put these kids on the path to success. This is very powerful work, and it, and it's sort of underlies how, from my perspective, we continue to move forward with our students with special needs, because sixteen and a half percent is also not extraordinary when compared to the whole district average. But it's a huge step in the right direction. It's, it's an important step. And I just wanted to call that out, because I think this board has done a great deal in the last couple of years to make equity happen for these kids, to make equity, and in this case, equity is benefiting children with special needs in a very obvious way, in an irrefutable way. And when we get the results at the end of this year, which my prediction will be better than these results, I think we're going to be sitting, sitting in this, in this meeting, we are familiar with saying, keep going, what next? Because that's, you know, ultimately, this board is sort of, you know, characterized by you all will celebrate for about five minutes before you start talking about what we're going to do now, next. So now this is good, but, so now tomorrow, what's going to start happening? That's just kind of who you are as a board. And that's great, because you have a team that's trying to catch, catch that lightning in a bottle. So I, as you know, I told our school board president, I'm, I'm at a, at a state administrator conference, I have a region meeting I'm going to run to, but I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you all for, for the forbearance and have a great rest of your night.
Thank you for sharing that. So that was good to see.
Okay, so I did include a little bit of information at the end. I wasn't really planning to present it, but I did put this just at the end of the slides here. There's some fiscal information. This is actually a repeat from information I already shared. But just in case we needed it for reference in our conversations today, it is there. So I just wanted to make sure that you saw that.
Did you want it presented?
I don't know, it's up to the board. Would they like it presented? Yeah, you've seen it. It's, it's, it's not new. It's just, I wanted it there in case any questions came up for reference.
Anything else? Comments? Yeah, go for it.
No, that was awesome. I'm looking forward to like seeing more of that. One of my questions is around, so I know we've done like a lot of reconfiguration of staff, you know, staffing, how we staffed, we talked a little bit about that with the response team, and and there's been like other internal structural changes. And I guess my question is like, okay, how are we like tracking, like, this is great, and we're investing resources, and like, what's the impact? So one thing I immediately thought about is like, I know that we have maybe it is like the behavior, what is
Board certified behavior analyst.
And are those, those are folks that are signed by complex.
Yes, there's three of them. So they each have one complex to themselves, and then they share the smallest complex.
And then I think you probably talked about this before, but their role is like working with teachers mainly?
So they, yeah, so their, their main role is to, they're, they're deployed kind of on a, like, sort of on a, not, I don't want to say emergency basis, but when there's a situation where a student is struggling, they'll go meet with the principal, they all visit the classroom, they can offer coaching to the teacher, they can provide coaching to the paras, if there are any working with the student. They may do some direct work with this student, but mostly that's not their capacity. They can, but it's more about building the capacity of the rest of the team, so that they have things and structures in place. They'll do some observations typically. And then the other thing that I've really been encouraging this year, and most of our schools have started doing this, but not a hundred percent, is they're working with the gen ed staff in staff meetings to train them on some of the behavior techniques that we use in special education, because they're, it's not, I mean, these are very highly level, highly, highly trained behaviorists. That they have a skill set that's far beyond what a typical educator has. And so they're able to like build the capacity of those gen ed teachers, so that they can do some of the strategies and techniques in their classroom to interrupt behaviors or provide support. So yeah, they're, they're working with the whole school team, but not as much like, I wouldn't put a B C B A with just one kid. I would prefer for them to be training the RBTs and the pairs and the, and the gen ed teachers and the principals of the schools, so they know what to do if there's issues.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And part of the reason why I asked, because I was just wondering like, where are the places to be able to track that impact? So I'm thinking like, if, for example, there's a classroom that's struggling and you have a B C B A, and they, you know, I'm just making, they spend forty percent of their time in classroom acts. forty percent of their time in classroom X. What then do we see in classroom X? In terms of like academic gains and other gains that are different from what we see in classroom Y, where like they didn't have that kind of support, right? Like, what are the ways that were to really be able like, I'm not arguing that these were good investments at all. I just think it's really powerful to be able to say, these are good investments and this is how we can prove, right? This was a good investment and this is the impact on kids and on teachers. And just like really being able to draw that through line. So yeah, just thinking a little bit about that.
I think one way we can track that, and it's something, again, it's a little early in the year, but we can start paying attention to it. Is reduced referrals, because referrals, especially up until probably halfway through last year. Many of them are are driven by behaviors that people feel like they don't have the tools to deal with. And so we should see a reduction in those types of referrals and a reduction in those types of initial I E Ps too, so that, you know, we're we're, you know, getting it, we're getting ahead of the game. We're getting ahead of the problems before it turns into something that becomes a special ed problem. And that's something we can do for you. We can like take a look at the numbers of referrals and throughout the course of the year. I think we could probably, I think the first time to do like a good dive would be maybe December. Because by then we would have a better idea of, you know, it's something that we could compare it to.
Whenever logically makes sense. It's just like probing for us to be like, thinking about this as we're implementing all of these things, right? Like, what do we expect to see? What kind of change do we want? And like, how do all of these strategies align to that? How would we demonstrate that? So then when we think about next year, it's like, okay, well, this didn't work as well as this. And so we wanted to put more into B C Bs because not only are we seeing do recent referrals, but oh, interestingly enough, it's like one classroom that had all the support. Also, a lot of ten percent jump on the task, right? Because we know that kids are in class and their behavior is supported and they're going to do better academically too, right? So how do we begin to like, just be really targeted in the kinds of supports that were, which we are already, I understand.
The other correlation that I would be looking for is we should see, and now this would take a while for it to go into effect, that a reduction in S K I assessments, and that's the request for like a one to one para. That should go down. And it's going to take a while, right? Because a lot of a lot of students have them already. But if the classroom teacher and other people on campus and the principal and all of the people in that student's team have these skills and are employing them, and the R B Ts are being brought in, we shouldn't have to be assigning as much one on one. And which is the most restrictive setting and it's, you know, our goal in special education is least restrictive. I mean, that's the law, is least restrict restrictive environment. So that's that's a correlation we will look for. We'll probably need a, I'm going to say more than a whole year of employment to see like that effect happen because all of the current I Ps are, the the SK I's are already there, right? So they're not going away. But that's that's the goal is to see that number like reduce.
No, but I don't want to dominate the conversation, so. Jump in.
I'm working on it.
One more question. One is so years ago, before any of you like were in these roles. We asked for special education audit. And we, there was a lot of resources put into the special education audit. And I was realizing the other day, I was like, huh, we haven't talked about the special education audit in a really long time. And so I was just wondering to the extent that you all have used that as a reference point for any of the work that we're doing. And if not, I think it would be a good thing to return to. Because there were a lot of really specific suggestions and like plans being placed as a result of that. Without being too sarcastic, that like we did. And so I just feel like, that's just. And then the last thing is it kind of builds off of what I was saying about the, like, what are the structures and systems that we put in place as we're like you know, but as we're thinking about continuum, as we're thinking about opening classes and like also building up with like this situation or, you know, there's like a student that it's not even other students, it's like parents, which is just like no tolerance for that, right? It like actually makes me sick to my stomach to think about. I feel like one of the things that I've been thinking about when I mentioned to Superintendent Ochoa was for us to pass a to for for us to be presented with a resolution related to special education, thinking about inclusions and modeling it off of the Equity Task Force Resolution in a way that encourages us to, in collaboration with community members to like review board board policies related to special education, because I think that there's a through line between. Like if there are, like, I want our administrators and our district staff and our educators to feel like supported in the way that you all address those kinds of situations. And like, I think there are some overarching statements that we can make about like our values as the district and like what kind of behaviorism isn't tolerated and how we treat kids. All of them. And also like, yeah, just ensuring that our policies reflect that. I also think there's a place for like some of the questions that we've been sharing around data and just like really deep data analysis and how we're tracking that and then how we're using that to drive impact. Resolution from years ago, but it doesn't have to be exactly that. But I I shared one example that's like just I have a like a friend who's a board member in another district in the South Bay and she authored a resolution that they adopted. And so I shared that with David and shared with you all as well. So yes, that would be, I think that would be great. And I know that there's like some interest in that. And I know that trustee Proctor included you on an email about it because I heard that you were interested in something similar.
Yes, and actually so Brenda Ochoa and I and Amy had a call because she was also interested in getting starting a group that can start looking at policies similar to what Equity Task Force is doing, but looking at them from the special education lens and just doing some policy review and making sure that everything is inclusive and and keeping special education students in mind as well. So.
Thank you.
It's to be, to be coming soon, I guess.
I did, but I wasn't sure. Are we going to talk about the D N Qs or?
So I, that is the same, that's part of the same information that I shared in August, but I wanted it here just in case. Just as a reference point for any questions that come up. It is tied to many things that we've talked about tonight. I think one of the, well, let's ask your question and make can I can speak to it?
Number seven, and I just didn't want to go there.
Yeah, no, I I included it on the discussion points in case it came up. It's not new information. It's all things that we've discussed before. But it does tie into sig this, it does tie into over referrals. It does tie into M T S S and what we're doing, you know, prior to referrals. And I think to me, that D N Q list, it's it's huge. There's a hun- a hundred kids that were assessed and didn't qualify. That the concern for me is just that the pretty much all of those students really were over referred. And fortunately, the the assessments didn't qualify them. They're not getting services that they don't need. But it does, it does sort of illustrate a system where we are jumping to assessment too early. And so that's, that's what that speaks to me.
Great, thank you. So so one of the, I should have a reminder, the same thing, trustee Watkins I talked about was the audit. And so one of the thoughts was is that there was back in the day, a matrix and everything else. And it was either yellow, green, red, or whatever it was. We have since, and this is pre pandemic, we have since sort of turned the whole special education department upside down and everything's different a little bit. But yeah, we still have some of those things that are still, I wouldn't say haunting us but are still important that are still looking at, such as the thirty year in a row being on the state's list of over identification of land acts. So in the future updates, I'd love sort of along the same lines, trustee Walker, to sort of have some sort of like what happened with that? Is it now not applicable anymore? Is it like there's stuff there that that, well, this has actually been important, but yet we didn't have anybody here or there. Like, just to kind of like circle back to that, because I remember we had those two consultants speak right there at that podium. And they went through a whole list of everything that we need to do. And so it'd be just, it'd be just great to kind of circle back and figure out what was there, what was. And there may be some stuff there that we just don't do anymore now, or that we just do differently, because we have shaken things up. So I, it'd be just great to know. Just off of my notes, just going through the presentation, everything, I'm glad we've been in the sensory room into at Lead Elementary. I'm pretty sure Parkside had one because we visited.
Right, we do. So there, this is similar to inclusion. The district has implemented sensory rooms in a variety of places. It wasn't consistent and there's no like district standard for it. So it might be a school had the funds or they had one time monies or they fundraised for it themselves. And they kind of bought items they wanted, but it wasn't like a like a consistent uniform process. So the purpose of the one at Lead was really to create a beautiful, very structured, very purposeful occupational therapy infused sensory room. And then to use that as our sort of model for other rooms moving forward. And the the goal is really to make sure that we have them available, starting with especially preschool S D C students and then the primary S C C kids too.
Great, yes.
Meadow Heights has one, Parkside has one. I think I'm missing, there's another one somewhere. George Hall has one.
And so, no, so the the idea, and this is great, I'm glad you're tying into the occupational therapist, because I do think they're really important. But there's that sort of circle back, so. The numbers, I'm glad Superintendent Ochoa showed that it is positive for our movement in the right direction, so I hope to make it about that. I would be, so I'm just gonna go off on some of the questions and answers I have as I have gone through. I love the idea because about the continuity and when we talk about the school complexes, we've sort of talked about this before a little bit. And before, way back when we had the audit, it was all about the push in and sort of inclusion. And, you know, there was a lot of students being moved from school to school to school. And it was, it was just depending on which grade they were. And so how do you build a community? How do you build continuity? How do you build a belonging to a specific school? And you you kind of did it. So I didn't, I like where this is going. I feel that the continuity will lead towards more inclusion because they will feel like a self sort of belonging. Like this ownership there in terms of the school, and that is great, because we do have some schools that their community and culture is very inclusive. And I would want to see that in all of our schools towards our special ed students. The the reason why I brought up the D N Qs is I'd love to get a better grasp of sort of the timelines, whether the D N Qs or the I E P timelines or the referral timelines, when someone actually asks for it. I know that there is, as trustee Corzo had mentioned, there is a bunch of people that have to be in the room when you sometimes it's scheduling things, sometimes it's just a staffing thing. But I'd love to have a better grasp of the timeline there. So when someone actually goes ahead and requests it, what are, what's the required timelines? And then what is sort of best practice and and are we meeting those? Because when I look at the D N Qs, you know, definitely the ones that we have had, you know, that are older. There's some lengthy timelines, you know, six months or more, but there's the recent ones. I mean, you're looking at two months. And I think that's pretty good, you know, on average or so. So I kind of would like to know and have a better grasp of that.
Yeah, sure. So when there's a request for assessment, the the requirement is a fifteen day response, not necessarily yes or no, it's the team needs to respond either by convening an S S T, the student success team or providing an assessment plan. So it's fifteen days from the initial referral, which is in the the last column. And then once that assessment plan is signed, so say they sign it the same day. It starts a sixty day window where all of the assessments need to be completed and the I E P needs to be held. It's told for, so the timeline stops for really long vacations, anything over ten school days. But generally, it's it's the sixty day timelines. The interesting thing about this list is that it's caught, you know, our district schools, but also something called the Samhail Foster City P L C, it's the preschool learning community. So so those students actually have a different timeline associated with them because we need to test them when they turn three. So instead of school age kids where we're working with a school year timeline that the preschool age population is by their birthday and it's starting when they turn three. And we work with the Golden Gate Regional Center for students who are already identified with needs to get those ahead of time. But unless you have a referral for that, then it would just be whenever the parent requested. But so I think it kind of speaks to, you can see there are large gaps of time for some of these. And I think it's in part because, well, I mean, this was for last year too. These are for the entire school year. There are, you know, preschoolers, three and four year olds, you can't really test them on the computer. And there were chunks of time where that's really the only way we could assess. So that kind of pushed us out of timeline for a lot of those. So whereas we would have, because we were out of timeline, we assessed anyway because we were already kind of out of that window. But a lot of the P L C ones, they're just so young. I don't know how useful it's going to be trying to get a kid to, a three year old to sit on Zoom.
Educational report, right?
So just from my knowledge, you go through the assessment, you find out actually there is either the do not qualify or actually, hey, this person does qualify. Then what is, there's a legal timeline, right, to get this I E P or what is that window?
So within those sixty days, you have to complete the report and then hold the initial, they call it an initial meeting. And it's initial whether they qualify or not. So even if they don't qualify, we still refer that meeting as an initial. And and that's when we would review the report and the team decides this child does require special education or this child does not. But that, yeah, so it's at the end of those the sixty days since the A P is, the assessment plan is signed.
Okay, so then from that sixty days, gee, is there actually, within that window, we are actually developing the I E P and everything else. So we need it within that sixty days.
Yeah, and so the goals are developed and that initial is the the first, it's the beginning of their belonging within special education.
So they would go for the assessments that were completed and then make recommendations for areas of need that they would have goals. And they talk about it as a team. But when then, once that initial meeting happens, the parents kind of review it, go through it. And, you know, often we have parents who have further questions, but once they sign consent, we are able to start services.
Two questions. We need parental consent.
They have to sign.
The assessment, right?
And they have to sign that, not only for the assessment plan, but they also have to sign the I E P in order for us to start providing services.
Right, because I know that in the past, there were issues where parents actually have not wanted to sign. And then it shows up on our timeline that, hey, something's sort of out of compliance or something doesn't work here. But part of it's because the parents didn't want to actually.
Or they don't agree with it.
And then, so going back, the the S S T, is that the initial review or is that?
An S S T is a function of general education. That's kind of more like pre referral. But even I, we're trying really hard as the district to separate that for years. The idea was that like S S Ts were like the gateway into special education. It was like step one, and it's really not. It's it's a time for the team to, like Diego said earlier, it's a time for the the whole educational team in the gen ed setting to say, what does this kid need? Because they're struggling in some area, whether it's behavior or academically or whatever it is. And to give them whatever that is for a proven amount of time to see if it works. Because in the olden days, it would be like, we had the S S T, we, and it was just more of like a, like a formality, I guess. And then everybody like, okay, let's assess them because we have the S S T. Now we're saying, no, we're not, we're we're giving actual you know, proven interventions. We're going to monitor this kid. We're going to do all, give them the things that he or she needs. And then, you know, way further down the line, would it be a conversation about this kid needs special ed? Now, though, my only caveat to all of this is every single kid is different. Now, though, my only caveat to all of this is every single kid is different. And then there are some students who do require special education right off the bat and we are obligated to find them. And so I don't wanna say that we, like, are saying no to everyone. It's just that in general, prac- best practice is to address that SST or the student study team, um, in the gen ed setting prior to jumping to assessment. But there are going to be students that require assessment right away.
Great, thank you. So I have one more question and then comment. Under the staffing, uh, positions, and I'm glad that we're going on, looking for them now. Are these positions, considering how difficult these positions are and how in high demand? And considering that, you know, we start hiring now, you're looking at 10 months later when we actually start, or let's say we hired in December, right? August comes around, we start the school, eight months, stuff happens. We've had just recently, I think, two of our vacancies right at the beginning of school because, um, a spouse got a new job out of the state and then someone was.
Right, things happen.
Yeah, things happen. So after COVID or after the craziness of COVID, I forget which year, I know that we sort of in some ways over-hired teachers to, to address that, right? We were being.
To offset it.
To offset it because we knew that there was gonna be some teachers who might just not show up, right? Like, like that term goes, they basically just don't show, right? So is this, or are these positions, one where we actually think about that and think that maybe we should just like, hey, this person's really good, we should grab them and then we either keep them sitting in the district office or what, because that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, so, um, Dennis knows, cause he's worked for years in HR. In the past, that wasn't our practice because we tied every single vacancy to a job position, right?
Yeah.
We haven't changed that policy, you know, um, like in board policy or anything, but in conversations with, um, HR and with the superintendent's office, we are looking at sort of stacking our decks and grabbing them early and grabbing as many as we need. We know that we always have openings in special ed, even if we think we're fully staffed. I mean, sometimes in March, we were like, hey, we're looking good. And then by July, you've got 10 openings, right? So we know that those are gonna happen, we've been down this path before, we are going to aggressively hire, um, and do it very early. I've actually already had somebody sign a contract for next year. Yeah, I think I was the first, first one. But we are, you know, we're, we're doing that early, we're doing it hard. And as Dennis mentioned, we may be searching outside of the area and looking for ways to entice people to come here. But yes, uh, to answer your question, the answer is yes, I think that that kind of pool hiring and doing it ahead of openings and being just sort of anticipating that things are gonna change is really the only way to go, I'd say.
Thank you. And the last question that I have is, uh, you made a comment about sort of the testing, like, okay, it's been a couple of months or so and now we've probably started getting referrals and now, right? Because students come in. That was a comment referring to like, sort of like our newer students, right? Because I'm, I'm assuming that for the students that we've had, you know, maybe the third graders, maybe the fourth graders, they've been in our district for a while. So it would seem that we kind of know the previous year that, hey, we might know that the student might need some testing and so when they go from third grade to fourth grade or fifth or whatever, right? They might start showing some signs and we might, we might need to test them. So two months may not, you know, we might try to.
Wait, we don't wait, wait, so I know what you're saying, we're not gonna wait if, if, if there's enough evidence to show that it's time to assess a student, right?
Yeah.
Um, so we wouldn't like, I say like, no, 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 I still, you know, it like, we, so we do have active assessment plan signed now. We do have kids being assessed now. The thing that we're, the area that we're focusing on is the primary. Those are the ones we're really worried about, like, we'll give these little guys a chance to learn how to be a kindergartner or a first grader. Especially since, you know, they, some of them, their really like formative years were spent online. So give them a chance to learn how to be a student, give them a chance to practice being at school. Because we'll see probably an increase in their behavior and improvements that, you know, we don't wanna jump to conclusions too early.
Yeah, yeah, great.
But yeah, for the older kids, yeah.
Yeah, cause my, my, my mind works is like, it's sort of like, well, there's the year over year and you know, you know, after a couple of months, there's referrals, there's like the HR and certain things, there's timelines that happen, right? But in the end, there are students and if we know kind of ahead of time, but hey, these students might need some extra help. And those timelines, it doesn't matter whether in third or fourth grade, I mean, the timelines, general timelines don't really.
No, it's, and it's the same, once it, once, um, an assessment plan is signed and that decision to sign it has to do with, you know, who requested it and what the reasons for the request were. But once that assessment plan is signed, then the, the clock starts ticking the same for everyone.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, last comment. No, I'm not out questioning you, I'm just, I just, like, my thoughts, it's this thought process, so.
I have to ask another one now.
You should, you should, there's all these things that come up, um, it's all learning processes, right? And, um, sort of when I, we've gone through special education updates many times sort of now. It, to me, it's sort of, it's, um, and maybe this is just the way my mind works is that we have 1,300 students with the IEPs now, right? And but we're also talking about the referrals and there's like two separate things there. And so when I look at the presentation and everything, I feel like it's all sort of there, we're all talking about everything. But there are actually two separate things, right? We're trying to reduce referrals, trying to catch them early, trying to do all these different things. But it's also, I wanna also know that for those who are, have the IEPs, like, what are we doing with the supports, we're doing all those different things. And to me, it's sort of like, it's all combined and in my head, I kind of wanna know, like, you know, almost like breaking it out because there's just, this, it's just, there's different tactics for each one. This is my final comment.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Right, this is really my last one. Now I just have one question about, um, actually, not a, one question about interventions. So, you know, we've talked a lot recently about like some of the gen ed interventions, like Math Boost and work. They seem to be incorporated as general education interventions in the way that they're presented with the receipt. And so I'm just wondering if, how accessible are those, are students, I mean, special needs, particularly those in SCC classes included? And things like Math Boost and I know we're thinking about getting more access.
Yes, yes, they are. Our students with special needs are included in the Math Boost invitations, so they are, um, receiving those. And then, um, in terms of what other like,
SD Math.
Path or, I mean, path is gen ed, that's just the curriculum for the kindergarten and first graders.
I meant more like things like Math.
Yeah, or, yeah, SD Math.
Yeah, that's a great improvement. And over 80% of the kids are like not at grade level, right? Even in like the grade level where you see the most improvements, you can have a strong representation, but I just, um, yes, so maybe if you wouldn't mind, just like, just even just announcing this presentation, just like sharing a little bit more information about what that looks like.
Anything else?
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm really excited. I know, I just, I just, I found one of my last page comments here in the windows. I'm very excited about the roadmap and where we're going. Very optimistic, I love the fact that it's tied into the street sheet plan. I love the comment that we just, you know, the field trip and everything else is super exciting. I just, it's, it's been sort of a roller coaster and I think we're, we're moving and I'm really happy. So, um, I just wanna thank you guys for all your, our work and every, and everybody else on the team and everybody else.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think this was a great meeting and, um, I appreciate you sharing kind of the successes and challenges and, and all that. I know that we were supposed to do a special ed update, um, I think in August, um, but this, I'm glad we were able to do it now and really appreciate. If there's nothing else, we can move to item 7A, which is adjournments. Okay, thank you, trustee Watkins and trustee Corzo. Okay, that's everyone, uh, we will, we will adjourn at 7:15 PM.
Thank you.